Good evening, family. How are you? I hope everyone is well. My name is Sharon Shroy. I am the Director of Public Engagement, the School of Public Affairs and Administration. In my role as Director of Public Engagement, it's my responsibility to ensure that our family is connected together, to where our faculty, staff, students, alumni, and our community partners are able to come together, to meet, discuss, network, collaborate, and work together to move the mission of SPA forward. As we are all watching and observing these unprecedented times that is going on in the country, as well as going on in the world, we are hoping that all of you are safe, that you have, and if you have lost any friends or family members to the coronavirus, we extend our condolences. But as you can see, when, if you're in public administration and we talk about inequities and inequalities in systems, the impact of the coronavirus to the four. But we also are dealing with institutional structural racism across the country, across the community. So we wanted to have a town hall to bring our family together, to share some remarks, and then just have a conversation as a discussion as one. We don't want to lecture you because all of you are well capable and doing well in your position. Our students are in this space. We want to hear from you. And so at this particular time, I would like to introduce our Dean of School of Public Affairs Administration, Charles Menefield. Please be mindful that this session is being recorded, and unless you are speaking, I'm muted at all times. It is my pleasure to introduce our Dean, Charles.
Thank you, Director Shroy. I appreciate that. Welcome, everyone. It is very good to see your faces here this evening. I appreciate your time to have this discussion. We're going to do a couple of things, one of which is to have some comments from Dr. Rubin to give us a little background on Woodrow Wilson. But I also want to hear your questions because it's very important to me, it's important to the staff and the faculty, to really get some sense of where the students are, and also to hear about the experiences of our alumni. So we're going to have some opportunities for you. We're going to be monitoring the chat room. So feel free to add some questions or comments in the chat rooms, and then we'll go from there. So before we get started, I want to, I read a really good article in the New York Times, and I'm going to pull that up and give you the title because I really want you to take a look at it. It's titled "What is Old?", and there's a long piece after that. So if you Google "what is old?" and put in the name Nicole Hannah-Jones, it's a New York Times article from a couple of weeks ago. It's one of the best pieces I've read in the Times in a long, long time. It has a nice historical overview of racism in America and where, you know, essentially black people are today. I'm going to cite a couple of things from there because it's really, really quite telling. She does a really excellent job. I'll put the title in the chat room for you later. But what is old, Nicole Hannah-Jones, N-O-K-O-L-E Hannah-Jones. So one of the things that she pointed out in her article is that Mama University conducted a poll and basically said, "Is racism a big problem in the U.S. right now?" And 76% of the participants says, "Yes, it is." But 71% of the white participants agreed that it was a big problem. Now, just a few years ago, that wasn't the case. It was, no, it's not really a problem in the U.S. So if you put that with George Floyd, with COVID, and the disparities that we see, you know, just in case you don't know, COVID is having a disparate impact on minority communities. So people of color are suffering and seem to always find themselves on the short end of the stick when it comes to whatever social ill that we can think of. So it's important to us to ensure that we are training and educating students to be very mindful and cognizant of what life is really like and how we can, you know, move to improve our lives, as well as the lives of those that we impact. So we're going to start by having Dr. Rubin talk a bit about Woodrow Wilson. As you very well know, he is the founder of public administration. But there's some history there that we don't know about. And there's a lot of history relative to other significant people that we probably don't know about. But it's coming out very slowly, very surely, it's coming out. And now that that ball is rolling, there really is not going to be any end to it until more monuments, more flags, et cetera, are brought down. So before we go any further, let me introduce Dr. Marilyn Rubin. Dr. Rubin came to the School of Public Affairs Administration from John Jay, where she spent a career educating students in budgeting and financial management. She came here as a distinguished fellow, distinguished scholar. And we are very happy and proud to have her, and we are very excited that she's going to give us this information on Woodrow Wilson. So, Dr. Rubin.
Marilyn, you're muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. It's very exciting for me to be at Rutgers. I mean, I actually am a graduate of Rutgers in the run day. So this is like coming home. And I've known the Dean since he was a young scholar. Now, he's still fairly young compared to me, but he's getting up there. He asked me to talk a little bit about Woodrow Wilson, and I think it's fitting that we talk about Woodrow Wilson because I'm sure you've all been following what's been going on at Princeton when the decision was made to change the name of the Wilson School. I want you to know that this wasn't the first time that there was an effort to do this. In '16, there was a movement at Princeton to change the name of the school because of Wilson's history, which I'll go into in a minute. But the president of Princeton at the time said no. And this time, he has said yes. So a lot of things have changed in four years. Woodrow Wilson, as the Dean said, is known as the father of public administration in the United States. In 1887, he published what is known as "The Study of Administration", and this is an essay that served as the foundation for the study of public administration. I'm sure that all of you, when you took your intro course in public administration, you probably read that also. Wilson was a professor of various schools before becoming president of Princeton. After he left presidency of Princeton, he became the governor of New Jersey for two years. And then he was elected the 28th president of the United States in 1912. And as far as I know, this is what most people know about him, plus a few other things. But we're going to delve into a little bit more about Woodrow Wilson. He was a progressive Democrat who believed in the power of the federal government, exposed corruption, regulated the economy, eliminated unethical business practices, and improved the general condition of society. On the international level, Wilson was an advocate for national self-determination and was the leading architect of religious movements. He won the Nobel Peace Prize in 1919. He campaigned for president on what was called "the new freedom platform", but promised banking power for business reform while pledging to respect individual freedoms. Remember those words. But Wilson was a man of many contradictions. He wanted to keep America neutral during World War I and ended up declaring war against Germany. He took a dim view of European empires, but intensified the U.S. involvement in Latin America. And then there's the biggest contradiction of all. Wilson was an advocate who expanded all sorts of rights and was an inspiration to the world after World War I, but was a racial bigot. When he was running for president, Wilson had promised fairness and justice to Negroes and had gained the support of many prominent blacks, including W.E.B. Du Bois. But once Wilson became president, he changed his tune and pursued racist policies. He dismissed Negro supervisors in the federal government and replaced them with whites. He also refused to appoint Negro ambassadors to Haiti and Santo Domingo, posts that had previously been given to them. Maybe the most egregious part of Wilson's record as president was his overseeing of the resegregation of the federal government. At the time that Wilson became president, Washington was a segregated city, except for federal government agencies that had been integrated during the post-Civil War reconstruction period, enabling blacks to obtain federal jobs and to work side by side with white federal government employees. But Wilson authorized members of his administration, the Treasury Secretary, and the head of the post office to introduce screened-off workplaces, separate lunchrooms, and separate bathrooms for blacks and whites. Remember, there had the reintegration before this. W.E.B. Du Bois wrote of one colored clerk, this is quoting him, "who could not actually be segregated on account of the nature of his work. So there was a cage built around him to separate him from his white coworkers." Wilson's first wife, who we never really hear much about, abetted his racist views, encouraging department heads to assign black and white work in separate workplaces and eating and bathroom facilities. During Wilson's years in office, the Ku Klux Klan experienced a major revival. President Wilson aligned himself symbolically with the Klan by ordering a private screening at the White House of "The Birth of a Nation", a racist film that portrayed black Americans as savage criminals and KKK members as heroic enforcers of a just and humane racial order. NAACP, which was a relatively new organization at the time, and numerous black and white religious groups condemned Wilson's segregationist racial agenda. Wilson's predecessors in the post-Civil War era had appointed several blacks to high-ranking government posts. Wilson not only put a stop to that, but in 1914 instituted a policy requiring federal job seekers to attach a photograph to their applications. Despite protests from leading civil rights leaders during his administration, Wilson refused to budge on his racist policies. He approved of the segregation of federal government workers, writing at one point that I quote, "It was in the African-American's interest to be separate from their white coworkers." William Monroe Trotta, a black graduate of Harvard University and a prominent civil rights leader who started the civil rights movement in the United States, he met with Wilson, and he reminded the president to his fled to assist, quote, "colored fellow citizens" in advancing the interests of their race in the United States. He ended by posing a question that contained a jab at Wilson's much-valued economic reform program. Trotta asked Wilson, "Have you a new freedom for white Americans and a new slavery for your black fellow citizens?" But Wilson did not consider the races equal, and he had no intention of equalizing them under the law. In essence, what he practiced was what you could call administrative racism, whereby public organizations severely harmed people of color. You can have administrative racism whether government policies are intentional or unintentional. And this moves us from Woodrow Wilson to now, a full century after Wilson's presidency, we still have administrative racism.
Thank you, Dr. Rubin. I want to let everyone know right now that this is a safe space. And when you're in the School of Public Affairs and Administration and your courses, in the offices of faculty, those are also safe spaces. So you are free to list your comments and/or questions in the chat box whenever you are ready. So I want to also reiterate that one of our founding values in the school is diversity. And we are very proud of the diversity at the university. I'm proud to say that we have the most diverse public administration program in the country. And as a person of color leading our school, I think it's very important that we have a voice, and it's my job to facilitate that. So one of the things I'm hoping that we get from this session is some ideas. As an accredited school, we basically submit what was called a diversity plan. And a part of that plan is, you know, as opportunities arise, we should be looking to diversify the faculty. And that's just not, you know, African-Americans, that's diversity in general, any race. But it's also to be manifested in some other ways. That's reading assignments, is invitation of speakers to the classrooms, and the list goes on and on. And one of the things, as I was thinking through this, is I don't really, you know, I know we put into the report, but I'm not sure exactly how some of these other things are manifested in a more significant way. Like, how often are people of color actually discussed in the classroom? What's actually said about the Woodrow Wilsons of the world? So I'm really interested to get your take on whether or not you feel like you're getting, I don't want to say a more balanced view of public administration, but that you're getting a diverse set of ideas and thoughts in your classes. Do you feel like you are being encouraged to deconstruct some of the thoughts, for example, around Woodrow Wilson? Yeah, how would it be viewed in your classroom if you wrote a paper on Woodrow Wilson and you pointed out some of these things that we're finding now? You know, if I was at the University of Virginia and they're pulling out monuments, and you wrote a paper about the Confederate flag, how would that be viewed? Do you feel like your professor would be okay with that? Do you feel like other students in your classroom would be okay with that? And even on, you know, the staff side, we have a very diverse staff. Do you feel like you're treated okay when you go into their offices? Those are the sorts of things that I really want to get your sense of. Some of you who've graduated, I'd like to know if you felt like we properly prepared you for the real world when it comes to race relations. You know, are there things that we can do differently now that you've been out for a few years? And it looks like there's some questions coming into the chat room. We're almost halfway through our time, so I want to make sure that we give ample time for this. So Sharon, it looks like a lot of people have identified their locations. And it looks like Josh has cited the article that I mentioned earlier. So here's a question. It says, "How is Rutgers assisting an alumni finding jobs in the road where there's little to no diversity? How does the institution provide the community on information about diversity?" So I don't actually think, it looks like this is from Diego, that race is actually, or diversity is a variable in our considerations. Care is on the call, but I feel pretty comfortable in saying, "We don't really know whether or not an organization is diverse or not unless, for some reason, it's been brought to delight." I will say this, Diego. Because this racism ball is rolling so fast, there's no going back. I can say pretty confidently at this point, and I think really Ryan Hagede pretty really nicely today, "We don't want to go back to the normal." Normal is what we were before. You know, overrepresented in COVID, overrepresented in the criminal justice system, underrepresented in terms of having health insurance, overrepresented in, or I should say, every, you know, health variable that you can possibly think of that's controllable, overrepresented in terms of not college-educated, high school dropouts, and the list goes on and on and on. So now that the ball is rolling, and I can't speak for every African-American, but I can certainly say, no one has any intention of going back to where we were. And I think when I look at what's happening, you know, people are now being supportive of organizations that are doing research on racism, the creation of organizations. I've seen this in the last week locally. PSENG has pledged, you know, a million dollars to support research in entities that do work on racism. So those sorts of things should have been happening a long time ago. And maybe if they were, we wouldn't have George Floyd on the news and on social media on the ground with someone's foot on his neck. So I think, you know, the whole goal of all of this is to improve white consciousness. And I think had people really paid attention to Colin Kaepernick and was listening to his message, that's all he was saying is, "I want white people to pay attention to what's going on with black people." He was trying to raise consciousness. And now the NFL is saying, "Oh, you know what? Colin, you were correct. We weren't really paying attention, and we should have." Unfortunately, he's still unemployed, but, you know, we're talking a year, two years later. So our goal, and my goal, is to do the utmost. And I am confident that the faculty and the staff support me on this decision, that we need to know that we are doing the best job that we can. So that's our goal.
Charles, there are a couple of questions in the chat room. Wendy, I see you have two. Do you want me to read them, or you want to unmute your mic and read them? Okay, I got you, Wendy. So the first question is, "How is SPA not only discussing diverse voices in class, but utilizing varied scholars and pedagogy and curriculum?"
That's a great question. So going back to my comment on the diversity plan, what we submit, well, let's go even better. So every six years, we're supposed to do a deep dive of all our processes. And one of those questions is, "Tell us how you're doing with respect to diversity." And that is manifested in a variety of different ways. I mentioned, you know, the employment piece, both faculty and staff. But the real hardcore response comes to the readings. And according to the diversity plan, which was completed literally as I was walking in the door, we're doing pretty well. But no one gets a pass just because you have a diverse student body. That doesn't mean anything. The question becomes, what are they being taught in the classrooms? And according to the plan, and I have no reason to believe that it's not accurate because things are cited. Like, it will literally say in Charles Menefield's class, "A book by Quintus Jett is used." And we know that Quintus is African-American, and he writes on, you know, whatever subject that that class would cover. So I can say that we're doing a pretty good job in that respect. But I guess what I don't know is, having someone to read something is one thing, but how, I don't know how the discussion flows in the classroom. That's the difference. That's the piece that I'm missing. How do you go about, you know, really reinforcing the writings of? Or, because we tend to follow, you know, whatever the majority is. And the majority is just one opinion. So if you want to be truly educated, you need to know what the other side is. So that's the part that I don't know about. But we're doing pretty well in terms of being diverse in our reading assignments, being diverse in the speakers that come to our programs. One of the ways that this really took a step into the right direction is when Director Shroy was hired to facilitate our outreach. I can say beyond a shadow of a doubt that she's done yeoman's work in bringing in a diverse set of speakers. And then also, I think for us, the ultimate, you know, award was, we won the Social Equity Award last year. And basically, it's an application, and you have to explain why you are deserving. So we won that award, not because we're diverse, because of all of our activities.
Okay, Dean, this is Wendy. Can I just jump in? You answered part of my question, and you started to touch on my second question. So having varied scholars is great because you're right, we do need to hear other voices. But how do we make sure that the discussions really look at that? So one of the examples I gave, if we're looking at a governmental budgeting and finance class, do we talk about how communities of color are affected by these budgets? Do we talk about the ways that monies are diverted in other places? So, I mean, it's, the readings are great, but it's beyond that. And how do we ensure that that's happening? What is SPA doing to make sure that that's happening?
That's exactly why we're holding this session because I don't know the answers to that question. And that's what I want to know from students. You know, ironically, Wendy, you know, I'm a budgeting person, and I just redid my budgeting book. And my intention when I started it was to use an equity lens. And, you know, things, you know, came into play, and I really didn't get a chance to bring it to fruition. But, you know, if you think about it, and I think budgeting is really the perfect caveat to your point because, you know, budget decisions are moral decisions. It's an opportunity for governments and for public administrators to really put money where they say they want to see some differences. So I'm not exactly sure how it's manifest in the classroom. That's what I want to know today. And that would be inclusive of other subjects. We talk about ethical behavior, you know, nonprofit organizations, et cetera. I want to know. And you should tell me. You took the class, like, do you believe those voices came out in that class?
No. No, I don't. I mean, we, even, you know, if we had, I can't say that for sure. Not 100%, right? So let's say, I can think off the top of my head in my governmental budgeting class, we had one black scholar. But we didn't necessarily talk about, again, the concepts in terms of communities of color or how they affect women. You know, we didn't really get into that information. And those are the kind of things that, if we're going out into the world now, particularly the way the climate is at this point, that it's not enough to say that we read, you know, this African-American scholar, or we read this Latinx scholar, but it has to go deeper than that. What information are we taking out? What do we need to know going out to those streets and saying, "These are the ways that we need to change policy"? Right? But if we're not having those discussions in class, some folks are not even going to think about some of those issues. We may know, you know, we can say, "Oh, yeah, look at these poor communities." And obviously, look at what's happening with COVID and how, you know, things were disparate. But what's beyond that, right? Those are the discussions that need to happen in class, not just in African-American studies or Latinx studies. It needs to happen in all of our subjects because it really does touch all of that.
Wendy, do you feel comfortable having this discussion in class?
I feel comfortable having this discussion anywhere because this is what I do. And this is the discussions that we need to have. Does that mean my fellow students are comfortable? I don't know. I don't have a problem with it.
So we have some other questions and comments in the chat room.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy. Quintus Jett, Dean, what would it like becoming a prominent scholar in public administration? Who is African-American? As you discover and learn about Wilson's racist legacies?
Okay, all right.
Oh, maybe I could elaborate. I mean, what I mean is, like, I came up in a different field. I came up in management organization theory from the business school kind of stuff. And I'm trying to, I mean, our, the people who we look to were people like Herb Simon and Jim March. And I'm just trying to get my head around myself. As I was coming up, getting the PhD and going forward, how would I feel as I learned about the most, one of the very prominent person is basically, well, is basically someone with such legacies? I mean, how would, I don't know, I think I would feel frustrated. And I don't even think I, I think I feel comfortable being able to talk about it. And I'm just wondering, like, what was it like within public administration? You know, as you discover more about what Wilson was about?
Right. So I'm going to go backwards for a minute, Quintus. I went to Mississippi State for my undergraduate degree in political science and I took a, a class in African American history. It was by far the best class that I had took at the university in terms of enlightening me. I went to an all-black high school and all of my teachers were, were, were black. All the students are black. I mean, but when I went to college and I took that class, it was in that class that I discovered something about Abraham Lincoln that I had never heard before in my life. And, and high school, we were basically told Abraham Lincoln, you know, he freed the slaves and he's his great, the greatest president of all time. But in that class, I, I learned something totally different about him. And the same sort of, you know, epiphany came when I learned about Woodrow Wilson. It does change who you are, but very similar to, to what you just described. In pursuing my PhD and pursuing my masters, I can't tell you, you know, other than the boy Frederick Douglass, the number of people of color who rose to the level of a Herbert Simon is very, very, very low. In fact, I would say none of them. But with that said, I, I'm not going to decry the value of studying the, the people that we have traditionally studied. You know, they, they bring value to it. But there's certainly the other side. And I think for someone who's African American, it's very important, I think to Wendy's point, is critical that people of color know about other people of color who are doing very good work that may not be following the mainstream, which if, if frequently doesn't. So works by African Americans and other minority groups is, is frequently marginalized. And I would say that in my educational process, that's how I would characterize it. That it was understudied or just, you know, marginalized as, as insignificant. So as a person, I've actually just built upon it. I can tell you, and I have no qualms saying this, in my career, every major step that I've made in my career was dictated by a white person. With the exception of one, they were all older white males. So I think, when I think about where we are holistically, the key to discussions about racism is actually the white male. We need white males to actually, to be holding sessions like this. To, basically we need convincing, black people need convincing that white males are actually interested in doing something. And I think that now that the wallets, you know, you see all these corporations, they, you know, I probably will end up getting in trouble and ginger and Jade, if she was still here, will get on me about it. These are economic decisions for a lot of people. And I think corporations are, are looking at it from an economic perspective. But as a black person, knowing what I know, I will take the money and hope that they actually mean what they say. All of these pledges, I see them every day. Corporation X says, you know, we believe in this and that. I hope they believe it, but in the meantime, if they're willing to provide funding to support African American this and African American that, we will take it with the expectations that over time, that they really mean it and that we'll see some policies that come forward that are really even more meaningful for us.
So we have another question in chat room. So I'm reading questions. I see, I, we definitely see your comments and your comments are, the session is being recorded and we will definitely take your, the dean will review your comments. But so currently I'm reading questions. I've been reading a lot of Dr. Norma Recutie's work on diversity in state government. However, looking for scholarly works on best practices in hiring, hiring practices in government. Do you have any suggested works?
So HR is not my field. So what, is there a way to, to copy these out of here?
Yes, I say, I can save them at the end of the session.
Okay, so this person's name is not there. It's J four, four, six, four, three. So whoever that is, can you give us your contact information? And we have several HR scholars, so we will definitely pass that on and get you a, a good answer. I can't answer that question.
Send your email address to me privately, Sharon Stroh. Many schools are offering diversity inclusion certifications with their degree programs. I think many students would be interested in a certificate in diversity and inclusion for the MPA program. Your thoughts, Dean?
So there are several conversations floating around campus around this very issue. So rather than having every, you know, academic program on campus hosting, you know, some sort of certificate in diversity inclusion, I think it's going to be one and we're all going to send our, our people to, to that location. Now that doesn't mean that we may not have a class, but the university doesn't want 10 certificates in diversity in 10 different programs. So that's, those conversations are occurring. But I have no idea at this point where it will be literally located.
So I'm going to go back to a comment earlier that was made by Dylan. And, and Dylan, so we, the dean probably will not be able to really respond to the, your comment, but I'm going to read it anyway. SPA could work with the School of Criminal Justice to talk more about systemic racism. There were complaints that SCJ does not talk about it enough in their curriculum and just brush it aside.
Okay, I'm looking for that question. Is it towards the?
It's towards the top.
I got it. Um, I don't disagree with you on, on that one. I will be honest with you Dylan, conversations about race, and I'll just be blunt and say, white people don't necessarily, a lot of them don't feel comfortable talking about race, right? It's a very small number when, when I think about other people. So you got to find the right person over there who's willing to, to put it out there, because sometimes, you know, if the person is white and the students are black, you know, they may be the victim themselves of, of like, you know, who are you to tell me about racism? So it's a very sensitive subject and I, I get it. But that would be, we have collaborated on some things. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about my own research, but I, I, I do a lot of work on policing and the impact that it has on minority communities. And I've done some work or collaborated with some people in criminal justice. But we haven't had, we don't have joint classes with criminal justice and we don't have joint programming with criminal justice to talk about issues like this. So it's not out of the possibility. So I'm going to actually put that on my, my notes. And maybe in the fall, we can create some, some programs. Now I would say the university does a really good job and this was, this was done long before George Floyd. I can say unequivocally that there's a lot of programming on campus in the school of law in particular around the whole issue of racism, women's issues, minority issues, LGBTQ issues. So I don't think the university, I, I actually think in comparison to the other institutions I've worked at, Rutgers University Newark does yeoman's work in addressing issues, in my opinion, relative to diverse groups. And if you've ever been at another university, it's, it's basically night and day. The University of Missouri where I was before, they were caught totally off guard when the student protests began. So it's, you know, unless you have been somewhere else, you don't really know, but you're going to have to take my word on this one. Life is definitely different in other places than it is here. It's much, much better, much better.
Diana Jones, can you open your mic and read your, your comment? I'd rather hear your voice than having to read it, so that way we get the full effect.
Sure. So I wrote, so, you know, during this time, there's been a lot of, you know, obviously we're all doing our individual research. We're searching, we're, we're asking questions, we're having conversations, you know? And one of the things that it, like I mean, I go back to is that, you know, racism and it is, is a matter of the heart. Right? And, and it's this deep rooted issue. So I wrote, you know, I've been learning a lot about this generational cellular memory in regards to trauma, you know, and how trauma travels through the generations. And so there, you know, there's a lot about that that comes out, you know, today. You know, you know, people are still feeling the effects of, of the trauma from, from, from the past. So, so how can we deal with, you know, with that? And what I suggested or what I shared was, that SPA could do a better job with, with leading students in, you know, learning these difficult histories or having the conversations in regards to inequalities to foster empathy. You know, and you know, one of the, I guess the studies that, that, that I saw was the Jane Elliott study, right, that she did with the blue eyed, you know, kids and the, and the brown eyed kids, right? What, what did that cause them? I'm not saying that we need to do that, but what I'm saying is that that, that experiment showed these kids what it meant to be pushed aside, what it meant to feel less than, feel, you know, feel, you know, on, on the outside. And so how can we create empathy, you know, so that, and, and how can we understand each other better? You know, so that's kind of like, you know, I'm, I'm not, I haven't experienced having many conversations or even learning a lot about race or inequalities in class. And so, you know, I'm thinking that it would be a good idea to start implementing some of that, you know, in, in the classroom for sure.
Dylan. I'm sorry, Charles.
Diana, thank you so much for speaking very candidly. I really, really appreciate that. It made me think about Eyes on the Prize, very, very old. But if you, if you have a chance to go back and view that series, Eyes on the Prize, you, you'll find a similar example with some dolls. So that's a great, great takeaway and that's the kind of feedback I want to hear from you today. We're going to hold a faculty meeting tomorrow and I'm going to give them a synopsis of what we had. But everything happens strategically and one of the things that's in our strategic plan is to look at our curriculum, the courses that we offer, the title of those courses and really the content of some of those courses. And this discussion right here is going to be revisited when we have that discussion about our curriculum. Because we can, we can be a game changer. We could be the, you know, the, what's that phrase? The poster child for how to create a curriculum that highlights diversity and inclusion. And I would love to be the one that facilitates that. So that's a great, great suggestion.
Charles, this is Wendy again. Can you please do that? Cause one of the specializations I want to have in the PhD program is diversity, equity, inclusion. And I have no classes to choose from. I literally have to figure out how to make my own specialization, right? So that is something that's really, really important for us to do. And also to Diana's point, when she starts talking about the cellular memory of trauma, that's racial battle fatigue. That's what that's called. And that's where my research is, but I have no foundation here in my own program.
I get it. And unfortunately, if you want to pursue that, you, you would have to do all that extra research and educate yourself, right? I, I get it. And I think we can do a lot to facilitate students' discussion of these things as well as writing papers about it, et cetera. Fantastic.
Dylan, I would appreciate if you would read your comment. I think it would come better from you than me reading it. So can you please open your mic?
Okay, yeah, sure. Thank you. So I wrote, I'm just scrolling up. So Dean, like what you were saying, I, I think was true. You know, we do take some things for granted here at Rutgers. Like we are, I think, ahead of everyone else. But I think like, right, we're worried about offending people or making people uncomfortable. But I think specifically because we're training people to go into the public sector, you have to be prepared in this kind of like, in this kind of field of work, because diverse, you're serving everybody. So I think we can kind of put comfort at the expense if we're, if, if these people are supposed to then go into the real world and then work for everybody. Cause like Woodrow Wilson obviously used public administration for the opposite of what we're trying to do. So you can go that route. So we can't, we don't want people leaving SPA and using public administration incorrectly.
I agree with you 100% Dylan, 100%. You know, I think what I'm going to do Sharon, I want to take, if you said you can copy all of this, I want to take all of this. I think I want to share all of this with, with the faculty as is, and then add my comments to it.
Okay.
I, I think it's important that they actually read, read the things that we're getting from our students.
Monica Bastos, can you please elaborate on your comment?
Sure. I've, I mean, I've been very lucky of having very diverse professors as well as fellow students, but I have noticed that, um, while some professors are very blunt about our problematic history and many times policies, you know, it, it involves having a discussion about the current climate, politically speaking. And professors sometimes have issue discussing that and hide behind the fact that we as public administrators are supposed to be neutral. And kind of becomes a, a political issue instead of discussing the actual heart of the problem. And I feel like when professors have an issue discussing that, or when they make it political, it becomes, we need to, we kind of have to tiptoe around the issue rather than actually face it, fist the bull by the horns.
Yeah. That's a problem that occurs everywhere. And I don't know what the solution for that is. It's, it's, I mean, to be blunt, it's very difficult for a lot of white people to talk about race. Even if you, you know, if you bring up the president, those discussions can be very, very sensitive. And I get it. But students need to be assured that, that, that it's a safe space. And I think faculty also need to be reassured by the students that it's okay to have this discussion. So you have a degree of power yourself. But I, I think you're right, Monica. I think sometimes someone's going to get offended, no matter what you say, you just don't worry about it. You know, it's a learning experience. That's why you're in college. No one's going to always agree with you. So I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I think it's, it's, yeah, well, I've never saw a subject that I didn't care about talking about, but I know that's not true for everybody else. Trying to get there is going to be very, very difficult. People would rather be safe than sorry.
Angela Russo, would you like to read your comment and question?
Sure. So I, I wondered if SPA has considered, or PAT SPA has considered or is considering including a course on historically racist policies such as our nation's history with housing policies and its impact on the structure of communities and agencies today, as well as include a focus on current and proposed policies in, in a way where students can examine what the potential desperate impact could be from them. Cause I haven't come across a course yet in my MPA program here that seems to have that focus.
No, we do not. And this goes back to someone's earlier point about collaborating. There's been a couple of studies that have been done across campus, one of which was done in SPA that actually looks at housing disparities. My good friend over in the, the law school, David Trout, does work in this area. So I think actually Angela, I think I would even make it a bit more broader. Because you could have a course on housing policy, but you can cover, you know, immigration policy, education policy. You can have a course designed, a public policy course designed to look at that. We do not have the course that you're describing. But again, this goes back to what I just assured Wendy of, that when we do the deep dive on our curriculum, these are the kinds of questions and courses that we can think about. So I'm going to add your recommendation to the list and go from there. Okay, thank you. Angela, you're a current student, correct? Okay, thank you. Angela, you're a current student, correct?
Yes, and I only used housing as an example. I think it should also be broad as, as more of a way that we examine how administrators have used their power and our systems to further, um, you know, make that disparate impact.
Let me also let all of you know that you can come to my office, you can call me, you can email me. Anytime you want, if you have an idea, I'm not going to judge you. You will always be in a safe space with me, no matter what the situation is. So feel free to reach out to me. I've said this since I've been here. My door is always open, but my email and my phones, if for some reason I don't respond, send the email back to me again. Um, but I, I do listen and I try to act accordingly. And I will tell you this, uh, when other persons are in a position like mine, they don't ask people how to be or how to do their job. I'm not asking anyone either. So I'm open to any ideas.
Emile, Emile, am I saying that correct?
It's Emily.
Emily, okay. First of all, I love your comment, and that is actually part of what, um, I do. So I want you to elaborate a little bit as well as send me your email address so we can follow up.
Sure. So, um, first, thank you so much Dean Menefield and for the SPA Academic Administration for putting this together. It's truly appreciated. Um, and, um, I'm only speaking here from my experience as a graduate student. Um, in my courses thus far, I've been encouraged to think critically, um, and to push the envelope further. It's been made a safe space for the most part, and I want to echo a lot of what my classmates and peers have said thus far in terms of conversations around race relations are unfortunately uncomfortable, but it's something we have to continue to lean into and also, and sometimes push the envelope further. But again, in a collegiate and respective manner as we move forward, and I'm sure that this is something that's going to continue, um, in the development of our curriculum. So one of my, um, suggestions was, um, for SPA to consider adopting a practice of, um, an administration, um, symposium that would be helped virtually given the current pandemic climate. And this would allow an opportunity for students to meaningfully engage with, um, leaders in organizations, in government, um, to continue these race relation conversations as we're going to be the future workforce, and this is going to be what it looks like. And for the most part, I would hope that a lot of, um, these employers would look at institutions like SPA who would reflect, um, the American population for what it is. It is diverse, it is beautiful, and it is strong, and it is industrious and capable of contributing. And I think it's an opportunity for our students to use our brain power to vocalize our concerns and our expectations for what we want our employers to have prepared and maybe start planning for this next wave, especially now that we're all, uh, it seems like everybody is tuned in to the conversations of race and are now seemingly more open to them, um, which is refreshing. Um, so that would be one suggestion, um, and a way to also engage students virtually. I know it's going to be a little bit difficult as well, um, moving forward. And we're not sure what the future is going to look like. Um, another sort of, uh, suggestion was, um, in order for our students to continue to be competitive in this, in this space, um, I think it is an opportunity for us to leverage, um, our expertise and understanding of the applications of technology and the role of administration and in developing policy, especially as it relates to race relations and on swell public health. Um, and many more opportunities as well. But I think this would give our students a competitive edge, which would back the diverse sort of background we all come from in terms of thought, race, um, and other sort of perspectives. Um, I hope that this is something that can be taken to the faculty and other administrations as well and considered. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it. So in the, the respective time, before I give the closing remarks to Dean Menefield, we will stay on, um, after seven o'clock if you still have comments or you still want to have a conversation to chat with the dean. He usually does stay on, um, afterwards. I also will, I, I need to put in a shameless plug to our alumni. I am always looking for alumni to participate in virtual panel presentations. You are the ones that are in the field right now. You're doing the work, and we need to connect our current students to our alumni. So please reach out to me. We started a series called, and, and, and it can be almost anything, but in February, we started a series called Public Servants of NORC. And everybody on the panel, um, at least four of them were alumni in the healthcare field. So I'm looking for alumni in education, alumni in municipal, alumni in water treatment, municipality sewage system. Whatever your area expertise is, we're, we are looking for our alumni to connect to our students. We know we have great alumni, we know we have great students, but we need your expertise. We're not asking for money yet, we're asking for your expertise. So that is my shameless plug for alumni. Reach out. I would like Dean Menefield to give our closing remarks for those who need to get off. And if you want to stay on, we'll still be on for at least another fifteen to thirty minutes. Charles.
Thank you, Sharon. Listen, I appreciate everyone's comments, Emily, Monica, Wendy, Quintus, and, and the list goes on. Thank you for speaking freely. The School of Public Affairs and Administration, in my opinion, is one of the key, uh, schools on the university campus that's poised to have a real voice and, and really make a real difference, uh, in this area. You have my word that your voices have not gone unheard today. Uh, as we see the flags come down, the monuments come down, the names of people that we have revered for many years, you know, some, to some degree being brought to shame, we, we are going to do our utmost to ensure that this is an educational process for all of our students, but to also, uh, ensure that we benefit in some ways that we haven't done in the past. I, I really, really appreciate the, the candid, uh, thoughts, and I look forward to moving forward with all of you as we, you know, seek to make our schools strong. And there's no doubt, we're resilient, so we're going to come through, um, very well. And I know that because we have a strong student body, a strong faculty and a strong staff behind us. So, thank you.